Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily. Thank you for tuning in. Your Madison City Schools broadcast will begin momentarily.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Madison Board of Education meeting for April 20th, 2023 to order, please. If we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. King, roll call, please. Here.
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 Excellent. Thank you, Ms. King. Board, if you'll review the agenda, I need a motion and a second.
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Overcash. All those in favor of the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The agenda passes, which takes us straight to presentations. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to ask Ms. Alicia Jimmison and Mr. Jonathan Bailey to come forward at this time. I would like to share a story with the board.
To the microphone.
Yeah, just right here. I would like to share a story with the board about these two tremendous educators that I learned from a parent. I received an email from a parent that shared the story with me that on a robotics trip, where these folks were chaperoning and leading students, the weather turned bad on the way home. In fact, it was the night that tornadoes went through the Hartsel area and the Lacy Springs area. And that these two outstanding educators, focusing on the safety of their students, their parents, their bus driver, and anyone else, looked at multiple options not to have their children's bus and others waiting for them to go through this storm, and made the decision to make a stop and secure a hotel so that their students could safely spend the night and make it home the next day. And I want to take this opportunity to recognize Ms. Jimmison and Mr. Bailey for their outstanding, tremendous support of our children and taking care of them. I cannot imagine a higher thing to be done for the children of this community than what you two did and led that night. And I wanted you to come tonight so we could personally say to you, thank you, and thank you, thank you for all you did that night to take care of our kids.
Y'all come up here so we can face the camera.
Mr. Beck's right here. He's going to get our picture. I normally stay out of it, but I'll give him a little history. Would you like to say a few words? Michael Jordan.
I just want to thank the board for taking time out of their agenda to recognize us. And it's just a huge honor for that to happen, for you guys to take time out of a meeting like this, and for Dr. Nichols to recognize that. A lot of the thanks and credit goes to the parent who wrote that email. She was with us on the trip. And she played a part in helping us secure rooms at a reasonable rate at a hotel. We're just very thankful and blessed that we get to teach at a school district that cares to honor just doing what we think was making a common sense decision to do the right thing. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Again, I wanted to say thank you all. Thanks to Ms. Gentile for being with us and thank our students for being patient as we were making decisions. Also, Dr. Donaldson, I probably bugged him to death calling him back and forth saying, hey, you know, we just feel very strongly about this. Please support us. And thank you guys so much for supporting us. But thank you most of all for allowing us to teach the children that we teach. And we thank the parents for their support as well. Thank you.
Ms. Gentile, would you please stand? We want to recognize you wrote the email and shared the story. And I just thank you. I appreciate you for supporting them and sharing with them. Well, we certainly are honored that they're with us. Thank you so much. Board, you may have things to say. Everybody, okay. The next recognition presentation will be done by Caitlin Herman. So I'll invite Caitlin to come forward.
Good afternoon. Thank you to Dr. Nichols, Dr. Donaldson, and the board for the opportunity to speak with you about Project Dial. The Project Dial Scholarship from UAH is funded through a U.S. Department of Education National Professional Development Grant, giving secondary content teachers a 54% discount on UAH's Master of Education tuition. This scholarship is offered to teachers in Madison City, Madison County, and Huntsville City through a formal partnership agreement between these districts and UAH. As a chosen partner district, we are working directly with UAH to implement the grant and offer scholarships of up to $8,406 to Madison City teachers interested in pursuing their master's degree. This MED in differentiated instruction with a focus on ESOL gives educators the opportunity to expand their skills in differentiating instruction with a specific focus on modifications that support our growing number of EL students. However, it also builds our teachers' capacity to differentiate for all students in our diverse student population. Dr. Andrea Word is with us this afternoon to welcome the inaugural cohort of Dial Scholarship recipients from across Madison City schools. Dr. Word is the PI and Director of Project Dial and is on the faculty in the Curriculum and Instruction Department at UAH. She is the Academic Advisor for ESOL and the primary instructor for the core ESOL classes in the MED program. She is here today to present each Madison City Scholarship winner a certificate for Project Dial. Yes, so our first teacher is Ms. Brittany Cox.
Will you call those at the mic? Just because the folks watching will be able to hear that.
Our first teacher is Ms. Brittany Cox. Then Ms. Sunyun Gozier. Ms. Tiara Minor. And Ms. Candace Rose. We also have two other scholarship recipients who are unable to be with us tonight, Ms. Mary Crouch and Ms. Emily Albert. Dr. Nichols, if you wouldn't mind coming to take a picture.
Would you like to say a few words now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to thank the board and thank the district for being such enthusiastic partners. You all were with us from the proposal stage. And so we have tried a couple of cycles. Grants don't always come the first time around. We are incredibly excited to have partners with the local districts and particularly having a first cohort getting ready to get started on May 30th. So they're going to be wrapping up everything they're doing for you and hitting the books as soon as school's out. And thank you all so much for sharing such amazing educators with us.
That smile.
Thank you.
I'm not sure, Mr. Newberry. Just hang in there, okay? Don't make me an escape hatch here. All right. Well, thank you. And we certainly appreciate our partnership with UAH. We look forward to this program and how it can be an investment into our school district. So please, thank you to all the staff and the president of UAH and the work that you're doing. Thank you so much. We also have Ms. Carol Bohatch here, who's going to give us an update on S2S Purple Update because it is celebrating Military Child Month.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols and Board. Maybe you guys want to. I'm here tonight to share, as Dr. Nichols said, that April is the month of the military child. This time last year, you signed a resolution in support of military families and the Purple Star Program. Thanks to your support, we've enjoyed Purple Star status all year. Purple Star Schools Program, which was established by the Alabama Legislature to recognize the efforts of districts like ours that are committed to and supportive of military students and their families. Last year, we were one of just a few districts in Alabama that every school in the district was awarded as a Purple Star School. I'd like to introduce a very special community partner, Mrs. Sonia Mulock with MSEC, which is the Military Child Education Coalition, who has been instrumental in our Purple Star efforts. She has something that she'd like to share with you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tomorrow, April 21st, is Purple Up for Military Kids. I see Dr. Nichols has his purple on today. You may have noticed on your way in tonight that some of us are dressed in purple and there are purple decorations in the lobby. Why purple? Purple combines each branch's colors together to make purple. Tomorrow, you can dress in purple and use the items Ms. Mulock gave you to show your support. Everyone here also is welcome. Outside in the lobby, there's a little basket of some purple items that you could wear tomorrow as well to show support for our military students and families. Every school has a student-to-student club, S2S, that brings military and civilian students together to welcome new students, create a positive environment, support academic excellence, and ease transitions. Thanks to our very active S2S clubs, our military-connected students have been celebrated all month with a variety of activities such as dress-up days for military kids, thank-you cards written to military kids or family members or friends, military child spotlight interviews and map displays, a dandelion gala, breakfast, lunch, popcorn, ice cream socials, all kinds of things for the students and their military parents. Here with me tonight, I have Ms. Courtney Mann. She is the S2S sponsor at Bob Jones. And she brought with her today Ms. Lindy Kirby, who is the Vice President of the S2S Club at Bob Jones. And she's going to share a little bit about her S2S experience.
Good afternoon. My name is Lindy Kirby, and I'm the Vice President of Student-to-Student at Bob Jones. I'm here today to talk to you about the importance of student-to-student or S2S at our schools. If you aren't familiar with S2S, it is essentially a club that supports new students, which in Madison are often military-connected students. We do our best to greet new students when they arrive at school and help them get used to their new environment and feel comfortable at school and feel comfortable by making sure they can get to class, eating with them at lunch, and things like that. This initial helping hand and smiling face is so important and beneficial to new kids. Coming into a new school can be scary, especially one as big as the schools in Madison. It is very easy to get lost or overlooked in the huge sea of chaos. There are crowded hallways that all look the same, full of people you've never met, different schedules than you're used to, traditions you aren't familiar with, and so much more to worry about. With S2S, this transition is a little bit easier. I love being a part of S2S, and here's why. I've seen the impact of this compassion firsthand. I've been in S2S since middle school, and when I was in eighth grade, I was introduced to a new student named Allison. In S2S, you're taught to introduce new students to your friends and make them feel welcome. So I did exactly that. Halloween was coming up, so I invited Allison to come trick-or-treating with my friend group and dress up in a group costume with us. We were the Seven Dors. We all had a blast. And from then on, Allison had an entire extra network of people, making sure that she felt welcome at school. Fast forward to now, and Allison is the host of parties and introduces us to new people that she has met. Basically, I love S2S because of the domino effect that being a friend for one new student has. When you help one person, they go on to help others, just like Allison, who then go on to help even more people. S2S makes our school a less overwhelming, more accommodating, and welcoming place to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindy.
Thank you for supporting all MCS military-connected students. And please help us in celebrating Purple Up for Military Kids by wearing your purple tomorrow.
Thank you, and we certainly appreciate all the work that each of our student groups do. Lindy, actually, in my student advisory group that I meet with twice a year, juniors, I agree totally. Thank you. Got to shout out to the superintendent. Oh, dog. And you come back next meeting, okay? I got candy for you. And we also had our podcast this week. I lost it for a second. And we did our S2S programs, and we had students from Rainbow and Discovery that came and talked on our podcast. And some of them were actually students that came here due to military families, and others had been here and connected with military families. So I certainly appreciate our staff. I appreciate the partnership we have and our student sponsors and those folks at the school for making us a better place to be warm and inviting when people move here. You know, these are families that their family members have chosen to go out and support this country and protect this country. And if we can do our part by making them feel welcome, that's the least we can do. And it certainly is an effort. And I will just say, I think we were the only district that had every school last year, but I don't know. I'll have to check on that. I'll have to check. But we were the only one that had as many schools as we had. How about that? So, but we are very proud of those, and thank you, Lindy, for being with us.
Any further presentations, Dr. Nichols?
No, sir, Mr. President.
Well, that will close presentations, and we'll move to the portion of the evening for public comments. If you have signed up with Ms. King prior to the board meeting, then she will call your name. And I just ask that we please be respectful of all involved as there may be differing opinions that are offered. Ms. King?
That'll work. Hey, so many positive things here. I'm just going to talk about something I think could be improved. When the Department of Education withdrew their COVID-19 reporting waiver, I saw our chronic absenteeism more than double from 2.9% to 7.4%. In February, I've seen North Alabama parents complain of increased child illness, and I've heard of parents being called by the schools to say, "How can we support you, parents, in getting your children to come into school instead of calling in sick?" So I'm here to remind you of the recommendations that I've shared with you before to get kids safely back in class and keep them there. And that was to give them at least six air changes per hour from any combination of outdoor air, better HVAC filtration, or in-room HEPA filtration. I know you're working on some of this, but I'm here to nudge you because I want to see my kid in your school. The reward is an over 80% reduction in the transmission of illness, and that is how to support parents in getting their kids to be in school. So I think you forged ahead with ionization at Liberty, Columbia, Rainbow, and Journey. And you already had ionization at Horizon, Midtown, Madison, and Heritage. We already let you know that ASHRAE, CDC, and EPA don't recommend ionization. Bang and Huntsville tested it and gave it a thumbs down, and the EPA dropped the house on it in November. Mr. Jones said that ionization lets you give less ventilation to students than code requires. And construction management told us that your engineer is responsible for competing how much. But that five CFM per person is typical. That is one half of what's required by code. So it sounds a lot like schools are not meeting code, and this is a very bad time for that if you want your students to be in class. In August, I asked you to spend half your ESR funds on HEPA filters to meet those recommendations. You spent the ESR money differently, so I asked you to look at the ELC program, which you did, for giving free HEPA filters to schools. And I think you received the filters, but I'm not sure if you're maybe waiting on something with those. You also said, and this is a really good step, that you've bought MERV 13 filters. That's a recommendation among experts. About 86% of the air that goes through those, over the top of your outdoor air, contributes to the fresh air that you're supposed to be given to kids and teachers. So we heard you waiting to see how far that gets you. And I want to urge you to use the Equivalent Outdoor Air Calculator by Wade Conlin. He is an instructor for ASHRAE. And that is how to evaluate what you're going to get from these. You don't need to wait till you install them to see that, I don't believe. When you do, you'll probably find that Bill Banflit was right. He's the former president of ASHRAE. He said that even once you use MERV 13 filters and meet code, you won't be meeting the recommendations. So at that point, you really ought to either crank up the outdoor air or bust out those HEPA filters and maybe get some more of them. So I should address three questions. What are you doing to bring schools up to code or make sure that they are meeting code now that you know that ionization does not contribute quantifiable outdoor air or equivalent according to EPA's testing? Two, how many CFM per person are you giving to students based on that Wade Conlin spreadsheet, the Equivalent Outdoor Air Calculator? And then, did you receive the HEPA filters from the ELC program, and where are they right now? So yeah, I've learned a lot since I brought this to you before. I've presented it to the American Healthcare Association, to Huntsville City Schools. I hear they're actually doing some of that stuff. I really want you to know what they know. So if I could present to, if I could present that to all of you, that'd be splendid, maybe in a public meeting sometime. That's it. It's clear that we have a chronic absenteeism problem, but we have no right to put it on parents and students if we have skipped that vital step in bringing kids safely back to school. So I'll leave a couple of copies of this at the door. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Ms. King? With no further comments, we will close public comments, and we will move into action items. Dr. Nichols, business actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the following items on the consent agenda. A, Minutes 23-07 of April 6, 2023. B, a field trip request for Bob Jones High School Archery to participate in a national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. C, a field trip request for James Clemens High School to compete at the International Leadership Competition in Dallas, Texas. D, a field trip request for Liberty Middle School Archery to participate in a national competition in Louisville, Kentucky. E, a field trip request for Mill Creek to participate in the National Archery in Louisville, Kentucky. F, a field trip request for the archery team at Midtown to participate in the National Archery Competition. G, a clinical internship agreement by the City of Madison Board of Education, OB-GYN Associates for James Clemens High School Medical Students. H, an agreement by and between the City of Madison Board of Education and Simple Helix to provide VM cloud setup storage RAM for the cost of $19,467.20. That's $11,467.20 a month for three years with an $8,000 one-time setup fee. I, an agreement by and between the City Board of Education and Synthetix to provide training, install, and program and configure the Crisis Alert equipment. This is a six-year, it's a three-year contract, but it's also renewable after three years. The pricing holds for six years. And J, a change order where we are receiving money back $19,682 on lighting improvements at the stadium. And K, a bid of 2023-09 on a dated management solution from LeanFrog Digital for the cost of $24,000 for one year.
Board, the superintendent has recommended approval of the consent agenda items A through K. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move. Second.
A motion by Mr. Cummings, a second by Mr. Newberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Consent agenda passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval an affiliation agreement by and between the City of Madison Board of Education, Oakwood University Dietetics Program, Department of Nutrition and Dietetics, and Intern to provide internships for learning and practical experience for students at Oakwood that are in the dietetics program.
Board, the superintendent recommends approval of an affiliation agreement by and between the City of Madison Board of Education and Oakwood University Dietetics Program. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Overcash. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, we have an agreement like this with UAB already. Oakwood University has an agreement with Huntsville Hospital. It was brought to us by a partnership with Dylan and relationships with Huntsville Hospital. And if we all remember, Dylan, who's now the CMP coordinator for us, actually did his internship out of UAB with Marty that was here. So it's a great opportunity for these students to get hands-on experience working with the cafeteria managers that we have and experience that we have. And we look forward to partnering with Oakwood University's program.
Board, any questions? Any discussion? I call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols?
Mr. President, members of the board, I present for a first reading. There'll be no vote tonight, and we will send these out to the associations. A first reading on 5.9.6 personal leave, 7.3.2 weighted grading scale, and 6.1.2 admission to school. These are from the Policy Committee, and I defer to members of the committee if they'd like to discuss these at this time.
Yeah. So I think the 5.9.6 personal leave is, I think, a one-word amendment. There was an ambiguity with, the policy currently states that teachers cannot take personal leave without approval for the first 10 days of the school year, the last 10 days of the school year. And there was a question on whether that was a workday or a calendar day. So we're adding calendar to the policy to indicate that this would be 10 calendar days from the end of school or the beginning of school. For the weighted grading scale, we are adding UA Early College and Auburn First as our partner, dual enrollment partners, as well as the ones that are currently in the policy. And we are adding a Cal 3, we're adding a Cal 3 course from UA Early College as a dual enrollment opportunity.
On the elevated, so that'll be on the elevated scale?
Yeah, yes, it'll be on the 6.0 scale, I think. Yes.
I think it's very exciting that the Policy Committee, and I know you've worked with Dr. Donaldson, is considering adding these early programs. I know members of the community have asked about that, and I think it's highly anticipated. And I appreciate all the work that's gone into something like this. Anything else? There's no vote tonight?
Right, and there's one more. 6.1.2, which is admission to schools. So I'm sure I get this right. Correct me if I'm wrong. But non-resident teachers that do not live in Madison City have the opportunity to send their kids to Madison City schools. I think a few years ago, the tuition fee was put into place for them for them to pay to send their children to school. And during COVID, we sort of, it was supposed to increase with the millage rate during COVID. We paused that, and now that we're out of it, we're supposed to revisit it every year. What we did with this is we increased it to $400. But it's going to stay there at our discretion, and we can revisit it whenever we want. We don't- We don't have to revisit it every year. So we can increase it if we deem necessary. So that was the change there.
Yes.
You said teachers, is that all staff?
Yes. All staff, yes, sir.
Absolutely. In this, the history of this, this came about as, you know, we had large public support for the millage increase to build Midtown and Journey. And so, you know, it was a difficult decision at the time for the district, but, you know, we were asking the residents to pay more to help with the overcrowding issues that we were having and to keep, you know, basically, basically keep building for what's next. And so, this was, policy was put in place then, and with the intent, like you say, to revisit it every year, and I appreciate you making the change to get us in compliance with our own policy.
I believe that's it.
Yes, sir.
And as usual, these will be posted on the website, and we'll take any feedback on these, and it'll come up for a vote if it's put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Nichols, is that close business actions?
Yes, sir.
We will move into personnel actions. Dr. Nichols.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the list of substitutes for Madison City schools.
For the superintendent recommends the list of substitutes for Madison City schools. These will be added to the running list that we have approved previously. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Newberry. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, contracts?
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the supplemental contracts for work to be performed for Madison City schools.
For the superintendent recommends approval of the supplemental contracts that you have before you. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Overcash and a second by Mr. Cummings. Dr. Nichols.
Again, it's that time of the year where we have a lot of summer camp, a lot of summer tutoring. Again, this will be the last summer where we really have the expansion of the tutoring through our ESR money that we have. So we'll have to kind of look for that, but also some items for next year, some sponsorships at the school and those types of things. So pretty standard as we end out one school year and start the summer, which is the middle of the school year.
That's right. Board, can these be taken as a group? Oh, we already have a motion and a second. We're taking it as a group. I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, personnel actions.
Mr. President, members of the board, I recommend for approval the remainder of the personnel items to include extended leave, job-related injuries, reemplomements, employments, transfers, retirements, resignations, and others.
For the superintendent recommends the approval of the personnel actions that you have before you, can these be taken as a group? If the group being found, can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman and a second by Mr. Overcash. Any discussion, board? Call for the vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Motion passes. Dr. Nichols, are there any you'd like to call any special attention to this evening?
I would. Mr. President, first, a retirement. Mr. Tom Runyon will be retiring from Bob Jones High School. He came there in 2012, teaching science, assisted boys' basketball, and then moved into administration where he's been the AD for the last six years. Folks at Bob Jones will miss Mr. Runyon, especially when he fired up the grill and had to feed as many students and people as possible. And we wish him the best of luck as he moves forward, and we know that his retirement will be as beneficial to him as his service has been to the students at Bob Jones High School. I would also like to recognize and introduce you with your action to the new principal at James Clemmons High School, Dr. Carrie Donaldson. Dr. Donaldson has been serving as the interim principal at James Clemmons. Prior to that, he served as the administrator for the Rise Academy, the alternative school, as well as assistant principal at James Clemmons. If you visit Dr. Donaldson, he's got Athens State basketball jersey in his office that he was, he was the last one of two teams before they closed the program down. They couldn't even go on without him. That was it. He told me this story, so I guess I can tell it, that he was in a car going to visit Athens, and he thought he was going to Athens, Georgia, and he told his mom on the phone he was going to Athens, Georgia, and the driver of the car was the coach, and he said, no, we're going to Athens, Alabama. And he said, I didn't even know where Athens, Alabama was. And we're sure glad that the driver of the car came to Alabama. And I'm just going to tell you, Dr. Donaldson has done a tremendous job in the last few months, serving as the interim principal. He is enthusiastic. He brings a vibrancy, but he also brings a humbleness, and his humbleness that comes, and I know a couple of his APs are here, they rushed over from the career fair. We got a big ballgame going on tonight. They all want to get out of here and get back to the Jetplex where the Patriots and the Jets are playing it out in the playoffs of the baseball game, and they don't want to be here any longer than they have to. But Dr. Donaldson, I look forward to working with you. You are a tremendous person, you're a tremendous educator, and I look forward to the days ahead and what you will do with your team at James Clemmons High School. Congratulations on being our new principal. You going to stop down there?
No.
I missed the Chuck E. Cheese away.
Thank y'all, it's truly an honor. I won't be up here long. Just want to tell my story about getting here. Five years ago, I got a call from an individual, and I remember the exact words that this gentleman said. Hey, Dr. D, how are you doing? And it was Mrs. Terrell. No one knew me here. He was the only one pretty much knew me. He contacted me. He was the first person that I was involved with, and the rest is history. So, Miss Terrell, man, if you don't mind, I'd like to give you a hug, and thank you so much.
My love.
I want to thank my family, my wife, Jacqueline, my beautiful wife, she's the goat. My mother-in-law, my wife said we best friends because when we get home, we act like two children. So, and I want to thank two special individuals that came, my pastor Brinkland and co-pastor. So thank y'all. I was talking to him, and I was talking to him about coming here, and he'll tell you before I finished my words, he said, you need to go to Madison City. He said it to me five years ago, my wife said it, and I'm here now. So I just want to thank, thank you all. Mr. Newberry, Mr. Cummings, Dr. Nichols. Hey, we're going back next year to play the softball game, right?
We'll talk about that.
We'll talk about it, okay. Mr. Holcamp, Ms. Lesman, thank you so much, Mr. Overcash. And thank y'all for the community for accepting me. McNarvus Miller and Fantabulous Flanagan, thank y'all so much for coming, all right? I'm excited, I really am. So thank y'all so much, and y'all have a good night. All right.
And it's your birthday.
It is my birthday, yes.
Happy birthday to you.
Cha, cha, cha.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank y'all very much.
Happy birthday, Dr. D.
Thank you.
Happy birthday to you.
All right. Hey, I missed the Chuck E. Cheese away.
Very exciting, very exciting. Dr. Nichols? Any other recognitions?
No, sir.
Then we'll move into superintendent comments.
I'm not sure how to comment on all this.
I know.
I don't know how to comment on these two teachers that took care of our kids. And I don't know what to say about a school district where kids help kids feel welcome. You know, we get a lot of accolades in this district. I tell people all the time, we got five-star kids, five-star parents, five-star teachers and staff, we got a five-star board superintendent, about three and a half. But I'm going to tell you something, all those reports and all those number ones don't touch what we've heard tonight about kids helping kids, and teachers going the extra mile to protect their kids. If that's not a great school district, I don't know what one is. I will say that tonight, the board approved in the consent agenda several big items. One will help us internally with our computer work and moving our servers. Folks that are in that business know how much a ransomware can cost you and how much updating equipment can cost you, and our partnership with Simple Helix will be extremely beneficial to our district. You also approved a management system that will allow us to respond quicker, to understand our discipline, as well as our mental health needs in our school district, that we try not to let someone fall through the cracks. And you also approved an alarm system, Crisis Alert, that will allow every staff member at the touch of a button to call for help in a medical emergency or any other type of emergency, and have the ability, if it needs to be, to lock down a school in the ultimate crisis situation. That's the beginning of what we have planned. Dr. West has met with Mr. Terrell and I, and there will be other things. We're going to have to secure a better job of our doors and our entryways. But I just, I appreciate you as the board for stepping out and letting our team look into these things that are going to help us do a better job across our district. I want to make special note that Mr. Terrell got a reduction in the stadium light cost. It's the first time he's been to the stadium that it did not cost me money when he came back. Ms. Williams, am I lying? Okay, just want to make sure that's right. We also got $30,000 for middle school STEM from Meta, Google, and I appreciate that partnership. I want to acknowledge that Mr. Overcash's wife is the goat of his family, she's the star, and she is the Madison Visionary Partner Volunteer of the Year, and it dates back to when she did more stuff to help us have a school district. And so would you please tell Debbie, congratulations, she's on the cover of the magazine. That's a pretty big deal. And she makes you look good. And Ms. Lesman and Mr. Newberry, Ms. Williams and Ms. Gray went to Montgomery this week on Advocacy Day to speak to our legislators about our budgets in this state and the needs we have. You know, we're the fastest-growing district in this state. We've been that way for a long time. We averaged the last five years 390 new students a year. We're growing at a rate, building schools at a rate. And I reminded our legislators when I talked to them that we're growing faster today than they anticipated growth in 2012 when we had something called BRAC. BRAC is a small thing compared to what we're experiencing in North Alabama right now. And I ask them, as they have $2-plus billion down there in excess, to remember the needs of the school districts, not just Madison City, Huntsville City, Madison County, Gunnersville, this whole region, to remember us and remember the infrastructure needs that we have, Limestone County, Athens, folks moving from all over the globe to live in our community. Purple Star Month. I am a military child. My dad served 27 years, and I was born in Elmendorf Air Force Base in Anchorage, Alaska, long before they had paved roads. And I know that we moved four times in my first two years of school, and how much it meant to me to have friends in those schools. We didn't have an S2S program back then. I'm glad we have that today. Dr. Donaldson talked about our fantastic night of playing in the Richmond softball game. I would just like to acknowledge to you that I made a diving catch and did not break any bones in my body. Am I lying, Dr. D? You were not lying. It was fantastic. Thank you. Now, we did lose 16 to two. It was 17. 17. And Coach Chambers has put all of us out in the waivers and is in the NIL for a new team.
You can't all play right field, can you?
No, we cannot. I want to thank the board for going to Discovery in the car line. Throughout this year, you as a board have made the decision to get out into our community, not just on activities like ballgames, but on cold mornings and rainy mornings and hot mornings and every other kind. And you've gotten out to see what's going on in our schools and had the opportunity to stand in a car line, meet and greet parents, but also to go in and sit down with principals and talk about that. And I want to thank you for doing that. Finally, I just want to congratulate Columbia. We had a great time this week taking cookies to the Columbia Elementary School there, a class banner school of distinction. That's, we've got a regular road to that event. We've had somebody or two schools every year in that. And Bonnie Howard is in the final 16 of the Teacher of the Year. We had a finalist last year. So I'm very proud of that. And finally, I will just say, because I know that the gentleman spoke earlier about attendance, we've been averaging 96% attendance since January. The lowest we've ever had is 94.3, but the average is over 95% attendance. So I think that says a lot for our operations team and Mr. Jones and Mr. Gunner and the work that they're doing. I certainly appreciate that, and I could go on and on. We have a great school district. We should get up every day, as Mr. Newberry reminds me, when I see him. Glad to be here, and be glad to be here. And look, the days ahead are going to be exciting. And so just hang on, for those of you out in the school, hang on. 16 days for the seniors, 24 days for non-seniors, 26 days till the teachers go home. Not that we're counting, but it's been a great year, and I just want to thank each of you and those that are watching and those you represent here for another great year in a great school district. So thank you. And Defazio and Scroggins are with us. I almost left our SROs out. There you go. One of them's out in the hall, but we appreciate you folks and what you mean to us and the service you give us throughout our schools. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. We'll move to board comments. Mr. Overcash?
That's a tough act to follow, isn't it? Really had it wound up. The Discovery Middle School car line was a lot different than we were used to with elementary school all the way down to pre-K. Most of them were kind of awake. A few of them did speak to us and the parents waved, and it was a different experience. And we have Liberty coming up in another week or so, and it was always good to sit down with the principals and have a short chat with them. The Simple Helix tour was amazing. I was somewhat familiar with them, but it was kind of like Star Wars being there. The amount of professionalism and the services they provide were just amazing. And I believe, Dr. Nichols may have forgotten this, I believe this has been since our last board meeting, some of us got to go on a tour with the school advisory committee where we attended an elementary school and got a really nice tour by some young ladies that were, I think, in second and fifth grade. And then we went to JC, and I got to sit in on an algebra class, a chemistry class, and a, I guess you'd call it medical technology class. And it's truly amazing that the opportunities we provide our students. And also I attended, we have a new BJ in the community. We had a groundbreaking today for BJ's warehouse. It's kind of a Costco-Sams, which had groundbreaking out in town Madison, and I think that will also provide a lot of funding for the schools as we try to draw more of the retail business into Madison. Congratulations to Dr. Donaldson, well deserved. We've been thoroughly pleased with your acting service and have heard nothing but good things, so congratulations, and glad to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Overcash. Mr. Newberry?
Just a handful of things. First, I think ACAP is either wrapping up or is almost wrapping up, and just wanted to shout out to all the teachers that are administering those tests. I know that that's a burden, and so thank y'all. Congratulations, Dr. Donaldson. Yeah, so as was mentioned, I was down in Montgomery on Tuesday with Um, yeah, so as was mentioned, I was down in Montgomery on Tuesday with, uh, Ms. Gray, Ms. Williams, and Ms. Lesman. We talked with, uh, a handful of the de, de, delegation from up here. Um, and I, I did want to thank, so this is my first time going. I didn't really know what to expect. ASB put on, I learned a lot. They did a really good job, but Ms. Lesman organized all the meetings and all that other stuff, so I just, well, I would have been wandering around lost without her. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, that's it. That's all I've got.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, we had fun in Montgomery on the way down and back. Um, I, I wanted, and Scott or Mr. Newberry did an excellent job. He remembers all the policies and everything and so it was nice to have him around because he could point out exactly what we're discussing. I did want to tell you too, since, um, Mr. Overcash mentioned the advisory tour, uh, some of the legislators had attended that and thought very highly of it, really eye-opening. And they mentioned it to some other school systems there that they might want to do something like that. I didn't get to say something about Ms. Jen, Ms. Jemison and Mr. Bailey. Uh, I think I like missed the moment or something and we went on, but thank you so much. You know, as a parent, and I'm sure all the parents, you treat these, these students like your own. And I'm sure the decision was made as a parent, you're thinking, these, these are my babies, no matter how old they are. So, um, across the board, you represented, that is what Madison City Schools does. Every teacher I have come across, every staff member, they treat our students like their own. And that is very comforting to know, um, not as, only as a board member, but as a parent. So thank you so much. That was huge. Um, and, uh, congratulations on the scholarships for the Project Dial. And like you said, Dr. Nichols, with all these approvals, the alarm system, uh, IT, crisis alerts, we are always seeking to improve our school system, our, um, which, you know, it's a great school system and there's always room for improvement. And I love that, that our, our, our team is always looking to improve. And thank you, we've got Mr. Clay Coleman from Simple Helix. Uh, if anybody has questions about what we're doing, he's here. So, um, it was a great tour. We appreciate you taking the time, um, showing us around and it was very secure. We all had to show our IDs, so our, our data should be well-secured. And May 15th is graduation, if nobody, just make sure you have that on your calendar. Congratulations, Dr. D. You will do great. Uh, I still just always remember back to when we first met and I knew great things are coming for you, so, um, good luck. You'll be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lesman. Mr. Cummings?
I guess I want to try to save a few minutes by saying I want to echo everything that was said so far. Um, you know, when we talked about the recognition of the teachers, you know, when you're dealing with someone's students and someone's child, you're trying to make the best decision, especially in a situation like that. But it was good to hear that she was in communication with her administration. And even though you're trying to make the best decision, you in communication and I'm sure that discussion, I would have loved to hear how that was behind the scenes as you make a decision to look out for, to do the best thing for the kids. That's what's special about Madison City. Um, I also want to speak to Project Dial. We know we have partnerships with our colleges to help our students, but to hear that this scholarship or this grant or this project is going to help our teachers is like a, just another outstanding partnership that the Madison City team is always working to achieve for the system and it's just a, a benefit. I want to talk about, I know we brought up the policy and we know that Madison City Schools, when they come into charging teachers to bring their kids into the system, it's actually a recruiting tool as well to come and teach at Madison City Schools. And if you get to come here, your kids have the opportunity to come here because we want to recruit the best teachers that we can. Um, so I, I really know that we're going to consider that and we look at that and I was glad that we put a kind of pause on that during COVID, during that tough time that everyone was going through. I want to congratulate Dr. Donaldson. You know, it speaks volume. We don't, we have heard great things, outstanding things about you and then to see Ms. Flanagan and Ms. Miller come and support is also outstanding, especially when we know there's so many activities going on. Also to see you bring your pastor and co-pastor, your spiritual leaders here, you know, speaks volumes to your personality and what you're trying to accomplish. And I just know you're going to do great things. This system is, is amazing and, you know, it, it's an excellent job that we able to promote, you know, talent that's already inside the system. So, excellent job. I'm just glad to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Uh, congratulations, Dr. D. You're, uh, you're absolutely so deserving of the position and, uh, and just, just excited for the school and the future and, and what you're going to bring. Uh, I'll be excited to, uh, to share with, share with my kids that are, that are big Dr. D fans that, uh, that, uh, that you're at the helm of JC now. Congratulations. Appreciate Mr. Overcash for, uh, bringing up the, uh, the groundbreaking of the, uh, of the BJ's Warehouse or, uh, I assume that's the name, BJ's Warehouse. Uh, you know, this community, and we, and we referenced it earlier also with the policy. And, uh, and, and, and yes, you are correct, Mr. Cummings, there, there is a, a, a fine balance between, uh, you know, it's tough to, tough to get great, great people and we want great people. And so, uh, so that was a discussion back then. I can see that being a discussion, uh, going forward, that, uh, that, that yes, uh, the community supported, supported that tax, tax increase, but we also want to, we want to have the best teachers. And so there's, there's certainly a balance there that, uh, that, uh, that, that, just because we're, we're now proposing to get the policy back in, in compliance with, get ourselves back in compliance, but it doesn't necessarily mean that that's something we're not going to, uh, continue to look at. Uh, but, but tying that back to, back to, uh, Mr. Overcash bringing up the opening of the BJ's, the, the tax structure that, that, that we have here with the, uh, with the property tax that's, that's fueled our growth and, uh, and a lot of these, uh, these security measures, um, uh, is, is only, that's only supplanting and, and, and adding to the, uh, the strong sales tax that we have here in, uh, in Madison City. And even with, with all of the growth that we have and the, uh, and the strong, uh, increases in, in year-over-year sales tax revenue, we are still funded, I believe, in the, in the bottom two-thirds, uh, in local funding of, of districts in the state. But we do so much with it. But I just, I just, I just wanted, wanted to point out that, that, uh, that, that things like, like a, a BJ's Warehouse opening up can be a game changer to us, but, uh, but, but there's always uncertainty. Uh, you know, there's uncertainty in, in the market and in sales and, and everything else. But, uh, but I just want to take this opportunity to point out that, that we couldn't keep pushing forward with, with progress and improvement without those kinds of incomes. And I, and just want to, want to thank everybody for, for supporting those, those, uh, those funding lines for us because, uh, you know, we, we do, we do, we do, we are getting more now than we've ever gotten, but it's still statewide, it's still pretty, pretty doggone low. So I just want to, want to thank the community and point that out. I think I've, I've talked enough. We've got important things to go, uh, go do tonight and so I'll announce that, uh, on May 2nd at 4:00 PM, we will have a finance committee meeting and following that adjournment, we will have, uh, May 2nd at 5:00 PM here in the board room. We will have our next school board meeting. And with that, I'll take a motion and a second. Do you want to go back?
You know, I do want to take a moment just to say, uh, thoughts and prayers are with Ms. Shannon Starworth. Um, she is having visitation for her son today.
Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Kevin, motion and a second for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Lesman, second by Mr. Newberry. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? We're adjourned.